I'd like to call the November 15th, 2022 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at our meeting this evening. Commissioners, are there any questions about the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on our consent agenda? Is there a motion to follow the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
And I would like to make one addition to the agenda to actually add a, at the beginning, add a proclamation for Commissioner Presley.
Is that acceptable to the makers of the motion? Second.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right. Oh, before you start, I think there's a, there's a short video we want to show first. So just hang on a second. Okay, it's photographs. All right, okay.
County of Buncombe proclamation honoring Commissioner Robert Presley. Whereas Robert Presley has served as a Buncombe County Commissioner from 2016 to present, and whereas Robert Presley has six years of service as a Buncombe County Commissioner representing District Three, and whereas Robert Presley has spent two terms dedicated to enhancing the lives of the citizens of Buncombe County, and whereas Robert Presley tirelessly advocated for education, infrastructure, and economic development, and whereas Robert Presley selflessly served on multiple committees, boards, and the Early Childhood Education and Development Fund Committee, Tourism Development Authority, Metropolitan Sewage District Board, and whereas Robert Presley facilitated countless projects for Buncombe County, including the road infrastructure, infrastructure in the Inca Commerce Park, Inca Recreation Destination, Pratt &amp; Whitney Economic Development, and more. Now therefore, let us honor and thank Robert Presley for his time, energy, knowledge, and abilities in serving our community. Adopted this 15th day of November, 2022, Board of Commissioners of Buncombe County by Brownie Newman Chair. Thank you for your service.
Well, I thought I told them I wanted to go out of here quietly. You know, the six years has been one of the most probably enjoyable things I've done in all my career. Went through three county managers, 10 commissioners, a couple clerks, but what I've done this for was the people of Buncombe County. I never expected to do this long as I did, and I sure did not want to become a career politician, so I've enjoyed the six years. I will continue to be a Buncombe County resident here, and I've enjoyed it. Best of luck to all y'all. Make the best decisions we can over the next six years. Thank y'all.
And Robert, we have a gift basket that we want to present to you. It is a small token of our gratitude to you for all your work with the Commission, but there's a lot of things in here that I think will remind you of a lot of the really great projects that we've been able to work on over the last few years, and especially some of the ones that you have particularly had your fingerprints on. So from the commissioners and the staff helped us with this, we just, something we wanted to share with you tonight, so thank you. All right, Commissioners, we now come to the public comment period. So have we had folks? Yes, okay, I see now. We've got folks who've signed up for public comment, and so we'll go through the list of folks who've signed up. If there's anybody who wants to speak to the Board, once we get through the list of folks who've signed up, I'll ask if anyone else to speak, and we'll take time to hear from anybody who wishes to speak during public comment. Each person's time limit is three minutes. When you've got about 30 seconds left, you'll get an orange light, and then a red light when your time's up. And we do ask that you discontinue once your time's up, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. So the first person that signed up is Scott Coleman, and I apologize in advance for mispronouncing anyone's name.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to be able to speak to you all. I am a 32-year resident of 366 Penner's Cove Road. Penner's Cove Road is home. Penner's Cove Community is home. I'm speaking today in regard to the KLP Penner's Eat Major Subdivision Project. A little history, back in January, my wife and I gathered the community support of Penner's Cove, put together a 18-point position statement, petition against the, at that time, the rezoning of the property from low density to residential two. At that time, the 18 points were reviewed by counsel and gave us the approval to, that we were on the right track of opposing the rezoning of this property. During the January 24th Planning Board Commission, when they voted seven to one to reject the proposal, at that point, we had gathered 1,376 signatures in opposition to the, to the rezoning. I would like to present those at the end of my time to, for your record. On the, attached here is the 18-point positions we had against rezoning. Now, come forward, the developers pulled the plan when they saw that there was significant community opposition to the plan, and it didn't make it to your February 20 Commission meeting. Since February, it's been kind of in la-la land, and it's been brought back going, I call it a side door, with, instead of asking for rezoning, they're now asking for a major subdivision. The caveat with that is it precludes any public comment, which is, as a community member, that has a significant distaste that we are being left out of the process. With the 18 points that we had originally in the petition, thankfully, one of those has been addressed by the developer, and they have proposed, it's not approved, they can't find any local conservation easement organization to partner with, so they're on a national search. At this point, it's not been obtained at this point. I would just ask you to please review the 18 points and see what you can do to protect Penner's Cove. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Lori Fisher.
Hello, I'm here to announce, hi Brownie, the Buncombe County Committee of Safety. We stand in peace, integrity, and love, men and women of the Almighty Creator, and we are delighted to declare the Buncombe County Settlement Covenant preamble. Notice to the principal is notice to the agent, and notice to the agent is notice to the principal for immediate release. We, the sovereign people living on and with the land in Buncombe County, North Carolina, a free, independent nation-state, in order to live together in harmony according to common law of the Almighty Creator, and to facilitate the avoidance of disputes, to facilitate the quick settlement of disputes which might arise, to provide for organized preservation and defense of life, liberty, and private property, to protect and administer public property for the benefit of the inhabitants, and to make certain limited agreements with other settlements of sovereign people for mutual benefit, ordain common accord and recognition the following notice from September 23rd, 2022, September 30, 2022, and October 7th, 22, declared on the courthouse steps. Comes now inhabitants of Buncombe County, by absolute writ of habeas corpus, in alignment with natural law and with absolute resolve, rebut all corporate authority. Original assembly and library records on date of, as of September 6, 2022. We give this county settlement announcement. Buncombe County Settlement Covenant, in harmony with all the 100 counties of North Carolina, we find Article One. By Almighty God granting us freedom, by unanimous decree, the local peoples in local peaceable lawful assembly, in settlement covenant in North Carolina, a free and independent nation-state, a member with other free and independent states, also known as republic for the United States, for America, set forth the following affirmations. Section One, local people in the family of man and woman, and we, the people centered in Almighty Creator, live on and with local land and use rights of way in people jurisdiction in grace affirmed by authority of the unanimous Declaration of Independence circa 1776, and Bill of Rights Articles, the Fifth, Seventh, Ninth, Tenth, and Eleventh circa 1787, 1791, and 2022, and beyond, beyond the reach of predator others, and also living in friendship and in peace treaties circa 1789 through 1791, and beyond, beyond the reach of predator others, and also affirmed by the Declarations One and Two circa 1776, North Carolina Constitution, and the Covenant of North Carolina, a free and independent state circa 2022. Thank you very much. You are informed.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up is Pat Bryant.
Good evening, Chair Newman, Commissioners, Pender, Staff, Buncombe County. My name's Pat Bryant. I'm, I'm finishing 16 years of service, proud service, of the Irwin District on the Buncombe County School Board, and I'm here tonight in that capacity, it's a little tough to do after 16 years, but I'm here tonight in that capacity to say thank you to the members of this Board and previous commissioners who've served on this Board, the body politic, for the partnerships that we have been able to forge over more than the 16 years, but I'm aware of, the past 16 years. It's, it's comforting to know that that partnership exists. It's been enjoyable for me as a school board member to work through those partnerships and things we've done together over those years, and I don't take it for granted, because in 16 years, I've met a lot of school board members in these states and other states where that isn't always the case. So as I transition out at the end of this month, I think I'm a, I think I'm still the Board Member through December the 3rd, I think is the date, but as I transition out, I just wanted to come tonight and just, just briefly say thank you again to you and to the Buncombe County Commission as a whole for your partnership with Buncombe County Schools over these past 16 years. Thank you.
Pat, thank you so much for, for all your service to the county schools, and we normally don't like to make comments during this time, but I just would, you know, I know I speak for everybody on the Board and we say how much we appreciate the relationship with the school Board, and you in particular, in terms of your long service to the community. So thank you for all that you've done, and thanks for coming out tonight. That's really, really very kind. Thank you. All right. The next person that's signed up is Andy Florrell. Okay, sorry about that.
Hi, thank you. I'm not really good at public speaking, I get very nervous. I'm gonna start by telling you a quick joke. There's an old saying that an environmentalist is a guy who's got his house in the woods, and a developer is a guy who wants a house in the woods. And from that, I just want to tell you that I'm not opposed to the Penner's Cove development from the aspect that this man who owns it has a right to develop it. He does. And his adherence to those local codes that this Board and others present are paramount, and I'm sure he's trying his best to comply with them right now. Am I personally thrilled about having all these buildings up the road from you? No, but I realize that this is more a legal matter. My concern tonight is to talk to you about traffic, because what we've got here is supposedly an additional 2,100 trips per day that are going to be put onto Penner's Cove Road, which are going to intersect with Mills Gap Road, which is staggering. I mean, this is a one lane, two lane, one lane going in each way, a Penner's Cove to that particular intersection where there is no light. I know there is a light that is being discussed in his plans to manage left-turn traffic and all that, and quite honestly, that's needed right now. If any of the Board members here were to go up to that traffic or to that intersection at seven in the morning, you'd see it's already needed, and to say, to pile on an additional 2,100 is going to create massive problems. You're gonna have backed-up lines of traffic, you're gonna have people eating and shaving in the car, road rage, things I've seen before when this kind of thing happens, where development happens really as a result of just builders building and people trying to catch up after the fact. We cannot let this be ready, fire, aim. This needs to be addressed now. It's not the builder's responsibility to try and figure out how to address all of these traffic concerns. His responsibility is to comply with the codes. It's your responsibility to represent us and to try and make sure that this doesn't become some haphazard thing that's gonna become the laughingstock of Asheville years down the road. History is calling you. This is the moment to step up and try and figure out how to ameliorate this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and the last person that signed up is Lee Barwick.
Good afternoon, my name is Lee Barwick. I'm also a resident of the Penner's Cove Community. Wanted to share my concerns as well for the traffic impacts, the environmental impacts. Please consider them as things being approved and figured out with the, with the whole situation, with the development. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other people who would like to address the Board during public comment? All right. Thank, I appreciate everyone who came out and took time to address the Board. Okay, we come to, we have a couple of presentations. The first is a proclamation recognizing Adoption Awareness Month, and Commissioner Edwards will present this item, and Heather Sellers from H. Health and Human Services is here to receive it. Thank you.
County of Buncombe proclamation of declaring November as Adoption Awareness Month. Whereas Adoption Awareness Month is celebrated to call attention to the fact that every child deserves to grow up in a loving, nurturing, permanent home, and that this experience lays the foundation for a happy, productive adulthood. And whereas in Buncombe County, there are 328 children and 50 young adults aged 18 to 21 in custody in Buncombe County, whereas 32 children achieved permanency with their forever families through adoption from July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2022. Whereas the month of November, Buncombe County Health and Human Services will continue to focus on children who need permanent adoptive families and honor families who have adopted children, as well as those who work to address the impacts of childhood trauma through safe and stable forever homes that meet the unique needs of children in foster care. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows. One, that the month of November, 2022, be proclaimed Adoption Awareness Month in Buncombe County. Two, that all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others be encouraged to celebrate adoption and honor adoptive families by increasing their awareness of the issues of adoption, and helping to focus attention on the need for adoptive parents and the children who are waiting for permanent homes. Three, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption. Adopted this day, 15th day of November, 2022, and signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, thank you to our families who have provided forever homes for so many children across this county. We are so grateful for your willingness to do so.
Thanks, I just wanted to say thank you. This Board has been overwhelmingly supportive of the work we do next door, and for acknowledging adoption awareness, this is an important piece of closure of child welfare involvement, and it's a celebration for the child and the family, and for anyone listening, we're always in need of more families to open up their homes and hearts for families locally. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one other proclamation. It is a proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month, and Commissioner Sloan will read the proclamation. And I believe that Sonia from Justice Services is here, and maybe some others, to receive. So thank you all for being with us.
Okay, Native, Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Buncombe County is committed to creating an inclusive community that celebrates diversity and ensures all residents have equitable opportunities to lead healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable lives, and whereas in honoring the cultures, traditions, and accomplishments of Native Americans that have shaped our country, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, violence, and genocide upon indigenous people. And whereas, the area currently known as Buncombe County, North Carolina rests on land that was first inhabited by the Cherokee, who flourished here for thousands of years, as well as the Catawba people. And whereas, the traditional territory of the Cherokee covered more than 100,000 square miles of what today is western North Carolina, eastern Tennessee, northern Georgia, and upstate South Carolina. And whereas, in the early 18th century, the estimated population of the Cherokee people was 36,000, but by 1770 was only about 7,000 due to forced relocation, consolidation of towns, and smallpox outbreaks. And whereas, white settlers began arriving in what would become Buncombe County in the 1760s and took land from the Cherokee that was not ceded nor paid for, and whereas, following a massacre led by Griffith Rutherford, leader of the Salisbury District militia, virtually no indigenous inhabitants were left in the present-day Buncombe County region. And whereas, the Cherokee people endure to this day, having survived catastrophic disease, loss of their ancestral lands, forced relocation to a reservation, long-term mismanagement at the reservation, family separations through the removal of children to boarding schools, and termination. And whereas, the Buncombe County Register of Deeds collaborated with Cherokee counterparts to collect information for the website known as As Long As, As Long As The Grass Shall Grow, featuring the history of Cherokee land sessions that created Buncombe County. And whereas, more than 8,000 members of the Eastern Band of the Cherokee now live in the Coala Boundary, just to our west, and whereas, we recognize and honor the generous contributions of the Eastern Band of the Cherokee to our economy, culture, and community. And whereas, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners supports renaming the Great Smoky Mountain National Park's Klingman's Dome to its Cherokee name, Kowhee. And whereas, we seek to repair the trauma of past oppression and broken trust, both locally and regionally, by lifting up indigenous cultures and voices, and striving together to build a future shared hope and promise for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that on the fif, this, the 15th day of November, 2022, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 22, 22 as Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures of indigenous people, to raise awareness about our shared history, to recognize that truth must come before reconciliation, and to acknowledge the important contributions that Native Americans have made to our community and our nation. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
Sheo. My name is Sonia Sunook. This is Amy Sunook and Tara Alexander. We are proud members of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians. On behalf of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians that work for Buncombe County, we are honored and blessed to accept this proclamation. The rich history and the truth of the past should be recognized, talked about, and never forgotten. We accept this proclamation in honor of our family and thank them for giving us our exquisite heritage. The late Chief Ozzy Bird Sunook, our great uncle, served two terms as the chief of the Cherokee. The late Edward Sunook, our grandfather, joined the United States Cavalry so he could become a US citizen and later moved to Buncombe County. The late Sue Adams, who dedicated numerous hours in our schools, educating our kids about the Eastern Band of Cherokee culture, and the, and the reason the three of us are blessed with our native legacy is Amy's father, Tommy Sunook, and Tara and I's dad, Mike Sunook, which is here today. When thinking about the culture of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, we give God the glory and thanks by offering Scripture Psalms 121, verses 1 and 2. Gadushy, wadaguganeha, asteleiske, annanne, deedaluhunska, ilale, ilo ule, iyo ule ludo. The translation of that is, "I will lift mine eyes unto the hills, for whence cometh my help. My help cometh from the Lord, which made heaven and earth." Waydo, thank you greatly for this opportunity.
Thank you so much for being with us and for your words, we really appreciate it. All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right. We don't have any public hearings at our meeting this evening. Ms. Pender, any items for County Manager's report?
Yes, sir. I would ask DK Leslie, Assistant County Manager, to share an update on the Asheville Reparations Commission work to date.
Good evening, Commissioners. Joining me today on this update will be Christine Edwards of Civility Localized. She's not here physically, but she is here remote. I appreciate her taking the time at the last minute to help to present this update. Want to get a nod that she's here? She's on, she's on? Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. So just to give an overview of what we'll talk about tonight, I'll provide somewhat of a background, and then a project management update. Christine is gonna then come and share a little more detail about the work in progress for the Commission, and give you some idea of what we're looking ahead to. Then I'll come back with the support of Clerk Joyner and provide you with an update on your Commission appointment, so get right into it. So in preparing for this quarterly update and talking to our county staff, we reflected on the effort thus far. And in talking about it, the, you know, the concept of what it takes to build an effective team. to build an effective team came to mind. In the considerable, in management, we think about five stages of building an effective team. You see them here. They're forming, storming, norming, performing, and a journey. Now, I promise you, this is not going to be a lecture, but we just wanted to get this update in that context as we move forward. So the Community Reparations Commission, established by City of Asheville Council Resolution in the summer of 2020, and then later resolved by this body to commit to reparations via community investments, and also committed to partnering with the City of Asheville on a reparations commission. As such, almost a year ago, we started working in conjunction with the city on outreach for commission members and developing a process for governing boards to appoint. This body appointed its members, which is six full commission members and two alternates, in March of 2020. Those actions is what are what we consider to be the forming stage. That also included that commission convening for the very first time through an orientation on April 30, 2022. Though time-intensive and very resource-intensive, I feel pretty confident in saying that the forming is probably the easiest part of building a team. It often comes with some fear, but also some optimism and excitement about a very new thing. It's getting to know and coming together to determine what needs to get done. This is what we've observed in this effort. The next phase is called storming. It's exactly what it sounds like. The Community Reparations Commission, along with the staff and the project team, have spent about five to six months in this stage. And though many might want to skip it or just get past it and not talk about it, because sometimes it's laden with conflict and it can be painful, want to avoid this stage, but it's inevitable. Though painful, especially played out in sometimes public way, it's necessary. It's how we push ourselves to work through our challenges in honest and real ways. I want to talk a little bit about some of the challenges and lessons learned during this time. Christine will later share our intent as we move forward into the Norman stage, and that's really understanding how to make it work. The challenges are two-sided. They're relational and then also process and procedural. From a relational perspective, from a staff perspective as well, the city and county had to figure out, you know, what does it mean to lead? What does it mean to support, co-lead, and collaborate? What we found is that in order to provide the support that the commission needs, we need full collaboration in planning, in decision-making, and in follow-up. The commission members, on the other hand, were getting to know each other, understanding the value of each member, the expertise they're bringing, and honoring every voice. That though the commission is exclusively those who identify as Black, we are not a monolith and would need to build trust in recognizing that. Then finally, of course, having to build trust among staff, the project team, and the commission members. From a procedural perspective, commissions and workgroups and committees aren't new to us, right? We have a multitude of them on both the city and the county side. And many of the commission members have sat and do sit on them. But this is different and unique in that, at least in this part of the United States, we are the first local jurisdictions to move towards repair for Black people in this way. And different from our neighbor in Illinois, we are looking across five impact-focused areas. So it's complicated. It's layered and it's laden with historical and very real current trauma. Finally, we're trying to bring to life and demonstrate what it looks like to shift power to those who have been historically excluded, which essentially is what we believe is necessary to implement the full policy intent from the governing bodies and generate trust. This means figuring out how to use the tools that we have as staff to provide consistency and structure while also remaining flexible and nimble to the will of the commission and the larger community. I've spoken a lot more than I prefer to, but we wanted to give light and space to the challenges we have experienced in this storming stage for two reasons. The first being, if we're going to do something this historic, we need to tell the story in full. How we get to the end goal is just as important as the end goal. And then also to acknowledge the courage and perseverance of both the commission members, the staff that's supporting this work, and our elected officials who are supporting us through the work as well. We sometimes take for granted the work that has to happen before the work can really happen, and we didn't want to do that with this. So I'll pause and see if there are any questions or comments before we move into the project update.
Don't think so this time.
Okay.
Keep on going.
So as we move into the Norman stage, I just wanted to give you all a project update, a project management update. Most of you are aware that the project management in full is managed by Tech equity currently, and the City of Asheville contracted with Tech equity in 2021 to do this work comprehensively. Additional project management in and about mid-August of 2022 was added via subcontract from Tech equity for Christine Edwards, who you'll hear from in a little bit. Tonight, since the city council's meeting was moved, they are actually hearing a request from the city manager to reassign that project in full to Christine Edwards due to increased capacity from Tech equity's principal consultant. So she's no longer to provide the level of project management necessary for this, for this project. From a county perspective, you know, from the very beginning, we've provided in-kind support for the project, from planning to legal advisement to communications. And then we also have five subject matter experts assigned to each focus area. In addition to that, of course, the sheriff's office is providing security. So this is a pretty critical project management change, and so we wanted to make sure, one, that you all were aware of that, but also that Christine could, since she's going to be taking an elite role in the project management, get introduced to you all officially and tell you all a little bit more about herself, the work she's done in Western North Carolina and Asheville, and what she intends to do to support the commission going forward. So I will turn it over to Christine.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope that you all can hear me and see me okay. Thank you, Chairman, for having me today. And DK, you have been an awesome support and just an awesome introduction to this project and to this process. So I'm Christine Edwards, and I founded a company called Civility Localized. We were founded in 2018 and we're headquartered in Charlotte, North Carolina. We do have a history of working with the City of Asheville, so we've developed some relationships in Western North Carolina. Most recently, in 2020, we helped to develop really this, the equity strategy that the City of Asheville continues to work under as it was launched from the 2020 Reimagining Public Safety Plan. And so that's where some of those relationships come from. And so I'm excited to really just be a part of this process also because Civility Localized, we are centered in equity and inclusion. So this is definitely a project that we wanted to take on wholeheartedly. And just to speak to some of the transition and what to expect and what we're hoping to really do here. So we are anticipating a seamless transition of project management. In my view, this is actually a pivotal time. Like DK said, this is a pivotal time in the project because we were fortunate to work with Tech equity, and you all were fortunate to work with Tech equity, to get that foundation set for reparations and get the folks who needed to be at the table, at the table. And now we are moving into this idea of identifying those harms that were done and developing recommendations. And so what I'm hoping to bring to the table is organization, structure, and a process to really take us through those next steps. So as you can see here in our presentation, I'm going to be working with the IFA workgroups. Nothing is going to change there. We're going to have, we're going to make sure that we have those local representation, and I'm going to be working with them virtually, but also making sure that I'm in Western NC, I'm in Buncombe County at least once a month, working with folks on the ground and attending these commission meetings, in addition to working with them virtually and providing that support. And when it comes to this critical path, we're going to be working with the IFA workgroups and really just take the work that they've done over the past several months and really set some structure around these recommendations that they are going to be putting together and that they're going to be putting before the commission. So one of our recommendations, so under recommendations, when we talk about immediate recommendations, that is something that we've heard very, very important from the commission. They want to make sure that when we talk about reparations, we're ending the harm. So what that looks like is looking at policies that currently exist within the city and the county, looking at data and resources to make sure that we can address those harms, and we're bringing it to the light, right? So this is something that we're going to be discussing at our next meeting on December 5. What you also can expect is restructuring some of those milestone dates when it comes to short-term, midterm, and long-term recommendations. I have been working with these IFA workgroups over the past several weeks to understand what information they need in order to create a recommendation around education, for example, and really setting those priorities. So I'm working with the IFAs, working with folks in data and strategy to really pull that data and pull that information so that we can make informed decisions. And what you can anticipate is at the start of the year, the full commission will have some initial recommendations to review. Let's see here. As you can read here, one of the immediate recommendations that has already been, I believe has already been approved and is already at least up for consideration, is this line item in the Buncombe County budget, really just affirming that reaffirmation that Buncombe County is on board and, you know, just really just reaffirming that in perpetuity, having that 500K, you know, line item budget. So we'll move to the next slide. Should I stop for any questions or...? Okay. And then, of course, looking ahead, again, I want to reiterate the importance of having a seamless transition. We're going to be sort of re-engineering this process, adding a little bit more structure to the process, and we're going to be basing this off of community feedback and survey feedback. So at the end of each commission meeting, you know, Tech equity and our project management team has been surveying the commission, and we want to make sure that they know that we hear them. We hear them loud and clear, and we're going to start implementing those changes, whether it's a process change, a meeting change, or communication change. So with the transition into Civility Localized, I just want to affirm that we're going to be fully present. We're going to be communicating more frequently, and we're going to be reading and reviewing the data that they're giving back to us so that they know that they're being heard. We want to make sure that when it comes to these data requests and responses, that that is a streamlined process. We, I had a meeting with the data team and just learning about the sheer number of data requests that have been put in, it's a lot. So I will say, I know that it's quite an undertaking, but what's needed during this time is somebody that's going to help move us along and somebody that can keep track of those data requests and also work with the IFAs so that they can build in that data into their recommendation and just make sure that it makes sense. So each of the IFAs are going to be submitting their data requests through myself, the project manager, and I'm going to be working with teams from both the city and the county to get those requests in. And then if though, if that information is not available at the city or county level, then they're going to point us to the resources that have that information. So we wanted to let you know that this is something that we're working on. We do recognize the, sort of, the weight, right, of this information because it's a lot of information. And I just want to affirm that we're going to be working on this and we're going to be providing regular updates to you all and also to the Reparations Commission. So when we talk about a standard recommendation template and also the process for vetting and voting. So recently, I worked in Mecklenburg County. So my company was contracted by Mecklenburg County, and we implemented a participatory budgeting project that reached countywide. And I know that reparations and participatory budgeting are two different things, but we pull from it those similarities around collaborative decision-making and also community-based decision-making and public funding, right? When we talk about this funding structure and also community-based prioritization. So I'm going to be borrowing some of the lessons learned from participatory budgeting to come up with a recommendation template that uses the knowledge and experience from the IFA leaders who live and work in Buncombe County and in Asheville, right? Really leaning on their expertise, but putting their expertise into a template that can be used across the board. So that is my hope, is to get that up and running by the end of this year so that at the top of the year, the commission, the full commission, can actually have some recommendations to review and to really kick off that vetting process. There's also going to be a need to bring in our legal team and just making sure we're looking at feasibility of some of these recommendations because right now, we don't know if they're going to be one-time projects. Is it going to be a policy change? Is it going to be a long-term, ongoing recommendation? So we're also going to be bringing in our legal team to offer guidance on that as well. So we're going to be creating a structure around that. Our hope is to have internally, to review that internally, and then to run that by our commission at the December 5 meeting and get that process rolling at the top of the year. I'm going to move a little quickly. I know it feels like I've been talking a little bit. So I just, I wanted to just lay the foundation and let you all know that these are things that we're working on, and I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this transition. Quickly, I'll touch on public engagement. We want to re-engage the community around this. We know that it's been several months. We want to open this process up. We want to open it up and provide opportunities for the public to engage and definitely leaning on the resources that we already have within Cape for the city and the county, you know, and making sure that we're providing them with the information that they can share with the public. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, Christine. Any questions for Christine?
Okay, so I will, thanks, Christine. I will go into commission appointments. I said earlier that there were six full commission appointments in each by focus area. We currently have one vacancy in the commission appointment, the full commission. We plan for there to be some attrition as a part of this process because it's so extended. And so you also pointed to alternates. At this time, we have two vacancies in the alternate category as well. So we wanted to start a discussion with you all and get some guidance on how you would like to move forward with filling those positions. And in thinking about what's possible, we just wanted to give you three options. Of course, you may have other ideas on how to move forward. But the first is to potentially elevate the current alternate. So if you recall, the city council made appointments and alternates, the county did, and then also the neighborhoods. So there are currently still alternates that have not been elevated to full commission. So that's an option. We just tried to think through possible pros and cons. Pros for that one is you really don't lose any time. They've been attending the meetings, and there'd be just be continuity in work and knowledge. Possible cons would be that there could potentially, we could potentially see a reduction in representation from across the county, not central to the City of Asheville. And then also a reduction in members appointed by, for their expertise. The other option is to review previous applicants. You know, that reduces time loss, no application process, and then we do have a clear indication that they were interested at some time, a year ago, they were interested. And so the cons to that one would be some people could have relocated or lost interest. Depending on the pool, you might also include cons from above. So we would still have to do some So, we would still have to do some level setting and onboarding. The third option, um, is to reopen the application process. Um, pros would be extending opportunities for participation, it allows for more access to people outside of, uh, incorporated, um, Buncombe County and, um, just increase knowledge across the community on the commission charge and goal. So, of course, that option is one that will take the most time, take the most time on, on your part and staff's part to get that to you. Um, and we, it would also take some level setting and onboarding. So, we just wanted to get, there could be a fourth option that we hadn't thought of. We wanted to give you all some things to think about and, uh, Lamar is seeking guidance on how to move forward with those appointments.
And could you repeat how many, uh, uh, vacancies there are again, please?
There's one vacancy, um, full commission, so one vacancy, um, and then two alternates, so three total, but two alternates and one full commission seat.
Okay. And the alternates attend the meetings but don't get a vote unless they're ever, unless they get elevated and?
Yes, they attend all the meetings, they attend all the work group meetings, they participate, their voice is heard in full, but when there's a vote, they don't, they're not allowed to vote.
And so, one of our alternates already was moved to the full commission and then the other ones resigned, is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's why they'd be drawing from the cities and the neighborhoods, alternates, and that's why the countywide representation would decline.
That's correct. I don't know, Lamar, if you want to?
I, I will, um, add as well, when we made the appointments initially, we only had a, possibly, I think about six people that applied that were, um, outside of the city and they were county residents, so we did add the pool of the people that the city did not use as appointments. So, we did have some appointments, um, within those impact focus area that were within city limits, if you remember that time.
Okay, one more question. So, say that we, because you need somebody on the actual commission, so we could select some, one of the alternates that's already there, right, and go ahead and elevate them, and then, then it sounds like then we need to replace the two alternates that we did have.
Yes, our recommendation would to have, would be to replace the two alternates, to always have one or two alternates there because it's such an extended process.
Right. So, if I'm understanding correctly, like for the, we could, we could go ahead and fill or whenever we decide to, fill the vacancy, but for the two alternates, we're, it seems like we're going to have to pull and, and either look?
Well, the, the city of Asheville still has two alternates and the, the neighborhoods still have two alternates.
But you, why would we pull from their alternates for our alternate? That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's just, that's just an option that we wanted to make sure, sure you all were aware of.
Because then you're reducing their alternates.
Mm-hmm.
And then they'd have to go out.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, I want to make sure I understood what you just said. The county still has two alternates that we appointed that are out there that we could draw from to?
No.
We don't, okay, I thought, so, the city does. So, if we, but, okay, since it's our vacancy, we could draw from the city's alternates to fill that position. Is that what you're asking?
Yes. So, what I was suggesting, right, we could pull from, it looks like from the, the city or the neighborhoods to fill the commission vacancy that needs to be filled. So, we could do that because those folks have been there from the beginning and have an understanding, we're not starting all over. But then the reality, so, we can do that, but then there's our two alternates, we don't have anybody in those positions anymore, so we're going to have to decide to, to fill those, and it, to me, it doesn't make sense to pull from the city or a neighborhood because you've already got alt, you'd just be removing their alternates.
And I think what we were saying there in the alternates, you can pull from the existing pool of applicants that you've been out for.
Right.
Or you could do another re-advertising.
Right, yeah. But we're going to have to look.
How long, uh, remind me, how long is this, the term of the member serving?
Originally, it was, uh, projected for two years.
Okay, and is it still, is that still a projection?
Well, the, the two years kind of extended. When we made the appointments, it took some time for them to actually be seated and do the work, actually start doing the work. So, we expect the work to be about 24 months.
Can the two years be extended?
Yeah, I think we have a flexibility to, you know, do whatever needs to ha, uh, make any changes that need to happen, yeah. Say again? It's the project, they're there until the project is over, we estimate it 24 months.
About 24 more months? I mean, it may not be for sure.
I can't say for certain how much longer it will take, but I think we, at, at a minimum, we, we expect it to start in January for the project, January of 2022, and it really didn't start till early summer.
Okay. Are we, are we, are, are y'all looking for us to make a decision tonight or just to kind of start the process of making a decision? Because we would, I mean, I would want to probably look at, uh, I mean, who the specific names are, right, because we'd have to make a choice about either if we're drawing from the applicant, the, um, alternates, which ones? So, that would be the next step, right, is to kind of get those, get that information, and then maybe at the next meeting, we can make a decision? Is that what you're thinking, Lamar?
Sure, um, we really wanted to kind of get some guidance, but we can definitely provide you with, um, any information that we have from the last interview process. Um, but I think the urgency is to basically get that vacancy filled, more importantly, and then we can look and think about or discuss the alternates, but we probably want to do it sooner than later, especially by the beginning of the year, because we are, um, I think they both said that we're in a critical time right now where decisions are kind of being made in the direction that, um, these IFAs will start moving towards.
So, this is, I, I hear you have a sense of urgency with that. So, does staff, I mean, if the commission agrees that you could select one of the alternates that's already serving on there, right, that's, I guess that's the first question, does the commission agree? I personally would agree with you selecting one of those alternates and elevating. And I guess then, then the next question would, does staff have a recommendation with that, that, that you could go ahead and proceed with that?
I'll jump in there because my recommendation would be to advertise, so we can do a full reach for the, for the other two alternates and see who's still interested. The, the applications that we currently have, we can bring them forward if they're still interested, but then we would get a full reach to advertise the two alternates.
Okay, but that's for the alternate, so I was asking about the?
The full position?
The full position, because that's what I was hearing them to say, that they want to move forward with that.
In my mind, and I haven't talked to DK about that, would be, can we fill it from an existing person, that way we can continue, wouldn't have to go back and re, reorient or level set.
Right, that's what, so, that was my question, you're choosing one of the alternates for that position. So, my question is, what's the procedure you want to, you would like to use for that?
Yeah, so we want to just seek some guidance, and if that's the direction you want, you want to go in, I think you still have a decision point because there are multiple alternates, and ultimately, it's y'all's decision who you want to, to, you know, elevate to that position. And so, we could, Lamar could provide you with names, who the alternates are, a little more information about them, and then you can determine if that's who you want to move forward.
Why don't we circulate that information, um, and then, at the next meeting, we'll either decide to, uh, go ahead and appoint one of the alternates or explore other possibilities or do interviews. So, let's circulate that, but, um, but, did, again, just to make sure I'm not misremembering this, none of the alternates that would be on the list would be people that the com- county commission previously interviewed, they'd all be city and neighborhood folks.
That's correct.
Okay, but it's, okay, let's share, let's, um, let's just circulate the information and we'll discuss again in our next meeting and possibly make a decision or at least discuss the next step.
The question I have before we move on, of these alternates, did any live outside of the city limits?
So, the city did not appoint any alternates that lived outside of the city. So, they were either neighborhood folks, which we'll have to double check, but they might have had the opportunity to appoint, like, people that were a part of their neighborhood but had relocated, but the city alternates are certainly just within the city.
The reason I ask that, I know a young man who moved away, he came up in Hillcrest, he's been very successful, he's come back here now to retire, and he would be excellent on that commish, commission, but he lives in Canlin. And when he applied, according to him, now, you know, I don't know, somebody misplaced his application or something, they say, and he wasn't considered, but I know him personally, I know his family, and he would be excellent on that. I mean, because he brings history to it, and this is what we need.
And you know that he's interested in serving?
Yes, I do. I've talked to him, yes.
Well, why, Lamar, why don't you circulate the list of folks we have? If there are other people who, um, are known to be interested, I mean, we can talk about all that at the next meeting and come up with a plan to fill the vacancies and look at the additional, potentially additional alternates too. So, great, um, any other thoughts on next steps on this? All right, uh, DK, anything else?
Nope, nothing else.
All right, Christine, hey, thank you so much for your work on this project and for, uh, taking time to give us these updates this evening, and, uh, we appreciate you and, uh, and, uh, look forward to further updates.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Avril, any other items? Okay, we have no old business, so we go to new business, and the first one, actually, these are all John Hudson, uh, from the Budget Office's items. Um, first one is a budget amendment to establish three new conservation easement projects.
Yes, so this budget amendment establishes three new conservation easement projects all in the Sandy mush area, Dragonheart Farm, Bruce and Jean Larson Farm, and Garrett Co. Farm, for a total of 202 acres, and uses $113,000 of budgeted conservation easement dollars.
And I'll just speak briefly to this, since I serve on the Ag Advisory Board. All three of these are donation easements, so this is just for the transaction costs with these, and they're also pretty prominent, they, um, kind of on the ridge lines, forested areas, ridge lines, one is actually on the Buncombe Haywood Line and the other one's on the Buncombe Madison Line, and they're clo- in close proximity to other conserved areas, so continuing to work on that, kind of, increasing the conservation in specific areas and looking at contiguous property.
Are you in favor of it?
Oh, well, well, yes, so, I, I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Okay. I was just, just curious. Um, all right, further discussion. All right, and, um, so just, you know, we just really appreciate the property owners who, you know, work on these projects and agree to make this, you know, uh, commitment of their properties to long-term protection of these places that people love in Buncombe County so much. So, very grateful to all the folks who helped make these projects happen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, next, uh, approval of cross-functional line item transfers memo.
So, per North Carolina General Statute 15915, the board may authorize the budget officer to transfer money between functions in the general fund as we budget by function. Buncombe County's budget ordinance allows the county manager to do this transfer in an amount of up to $75,000. The statute provides that such transfers will be reported to the board at the next meeting. I'm here to provide a memo of the sole transfer of this nature this fiscal year, $16,146 was moved from Public Safety Function and $5,558 from the Human Services Function for a total of $21,704 to the General Government Function for the purpose of consolidating a janitorial contract at 35 Woodfin. Future transfers, if they occur, will be provided via memo in the consent agenda.
Okay, no action needed, you're just telling us this information?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. And, n- another budget amendment for Affordable Housing Services Program Budget Consolidation.
So, this budget amendment moves the $1,240,600 of expenditures and revenues remaining in the fiscal year '22 Affordable Housing Project and places them in the fiscal year '23 Project. It also realizes as revenue $247,555 in previously unbudgeted program income from loan repayments and adds that to the fiscal year '23 Project for a total of $1,488,155. This does not require any additional county dollars. This will bring the budgeted amount of fiscal year '23 Project to $3.8 million.
Is there a motion to approve?
So, I'm?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you, John. All right, commissioners, we have some board appointments. Um, let's do, okay, on the sheet, we have the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee. I'll make a motion to appoint Jamie Benchoff.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, under Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Advisory Board, I will make a motion to appoint Miranda Poe, Jorge Redmond, and to reappoint Jeremy Bricker and Tim Henderson. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, uh, let's go to the Tourism Development Authority. Uh, we interviewed, uh, a lot of these applicants earlier today, so we appreciate everyone who's, uh, taken time to come answer some questions, and, um, I think what I'll suggest is, we just go down the, just go down the aisle, I'll start over with Commissioner Edwards, and the folks would just identify who their favorite applicant is, and we'll go through and, um, you know that, go ahead, go ahead.
Can we have Michael through to clarify that question around the, whether or not they have to be in there in person?
Yeah.
Can they be there virtually?
Okay. All right, so, so, yeah, this question came up about for, for an organization, the Tourism Development Authority, um, whether it is permissible under state law if an organization wanted to have a person participate in a meeting virtually and the proper notice was given if that's needed, is that permissible in North Carolina? I understand from what you mentioned earlier, uh, post-pandemic emergency, the state law is very specific that county commission meetings and municipal, uh, city council, like, uh, meetings must be attended in person in order for members to vote, but on a board like the TDA is doing a virtual meeting, uh, possible?
I, I think it is, uh, but for, uh, their bylaws, Lamar was able to dig up the bylaws, they have old bylaws out of date, it still has it when they had nine members from 2013, there's 11 members now, but it said they needed to have four members. It does, it's, the state statute says that you, you've created the TDA board and it shall establish its own rules, so it doesn't really address that issue.
Okay, so they could if they desired to?
They could, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, and there's other aspects to their bylaws that are outdated?
Just as a number of, what the quorum would be and how many members there are, yes, and I understand that they're revising them as we speak.
Okay, and so they're going to be revising their bylaws anyway, so, convenient. All right. Um, well, thank you, thank you for that, for that clarification. Um, so, you know, before we, before we, um, start traveling off our favorite candidates here, you know, the one thing about just the process, I wanted to maybe just have a brief discussion about is, because I don't know if we've, I don't know if we've discussed this before, and Michael, feel free to weigh in on this, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, you know, um, do we, I guess my question is, do we need a majority of the board to appoint someone? Like, for example, if, and I don't know how this is going to turn out at all, I swear, so, but if we went down and theoretically, everybody had one person that they liked and only, let's say one, one applicant only had two commissioners supporting them, but that actually was more than anybody else got, would that person be appointed? Because it seems a little strange that, like, the Board of Commissioners would appoint someone that maybe only like two out of seven commissioners supported, so I just don't know, I don't know if it's a process question we've raised before, usually it's a very clear majority, but, uh, is that something we need to think about before we start voting on this one?
I think so, I mean, my, my head would be, I've, I've not experienced that in here before, but my, my guess would be that if you think that might happen, let's do one position at a time, two decisions.
Let me, let me, how about, how about, how about this as a suggestion? If we go through and no candidate has a majority of the board, then let's take the people who get the, the top two, who have the most support, and we'll go again, and people will identify which of them they want so that we have a, somebody who gets a majority. so that we have somebody who gets a majority support. Because there were, you know, in this case, there were a lot of, a lot of applicants. So it is certainly possible that someone may not automatically get a majority in the first round. But would that be acceptable to everyone as a process? Maybe, all right, fair enough. It could happen, it could happen. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards, what say you?
Elizabeth Putnam.
Okay, hang on, hang on, okay. All right.
Elizabeth Putnam.
Elizabeth Putnam. Peer pressure.
It was, it was so strong. Yeah, I'll, I'll go with Michael.
Okay. All right. My concerns were unfounded. Elizabeth Putnam got the majority of the votes. So I appreciate all the people who applied and congratulations to Elizabeth. And she'll be the new appointee representing the short-term rental carved-out position on the board. All right, those are all the board appointments. Got two announcements.
Chairman Newman, if I may, for some advertisement time. On the bottom of the board appointment sheet, there are some information that I want to share with the board. And so we can possibly get some more applicants for this. We currently have no applications for the Environmental Energy Stewardship Subcommittee. We had a vacancy there. If anybody out there would like to apply, we are taking applications. For the General Obligation Bonds Community Oversight Committee, we actually have two applications and there are four vacancies. So also, if somebody out there would like to apply for that. And so we just wanted to put that out there. And if you know of anybody that are interested in those positions, please have them apply.
Okay, and the positions that we have vacancies for on the Bonds Oversight Committee, do you recall which positions those are?
No, that, that information, if they go to the website, it is identified. But I don't currently know that specific information.
All right, so just to, so just to kind of highlight that. So these, there was, the voters last week approved the Conservation Bond, $30 million, the Affordable Housing Bond, $40 million. We have a Citizens Oversight Committee that's gonna, it's, it's not going to have to meet frequently, but it has the responsibility of assuring that all the funds are invested in purposes defined in the bond language. So if anybody's interested in that, we encourage them to go to the county website. And there are specific positions for like a banker, an accountant, someone from the affordable housing community, somebody from the conservation and green waste community. So there's several different positions. Check it out. And if you meet the criteria, we'd love to have you apply. Okay, anything else, Lamar?
That'll be all, thank you.
Great.
Are we advertising for the, just a random question. Are we advertising for the reparations vacancy at this point? Couldn't quite tell.
I don't think we decided to do further advertising for now. I think we're going to look at the?
Do it as a hedge?
We're going to look at the, the alternates. Commissioner Whiteside's mentioned there is someone who I think intended to apply or tried to apply. So if there's, if, so at the next meeting, we can talk, we can talk about it. And, because we will, it sounds like we definitely need to appoint a new full-time, a full commissioner and possibly appoint new alternates who, for all practical purposes, do serve. They just don't get a technical vote on voting matters. So we can talk about all that. But we're not reopening for new applications at this time.
Not at this time, but I do want to clarify, because we need to make sure that, that the applicant that you're referring to, we do have an application and filed for them. If that's not, we need to verify that. If we don't have that, then there's no way you can appoint that person.
Okay, well, can we look at that? And, and, and if, and if we don't, would it be, would everybody be comfortable with us kind of having that in consideration? Since it sounded like this person did want to apply and tried to apply or something, so something happened. We maybe not be able to figure that out, but.
Wouldn't we, we'd have to open it up so that they could apply, right, if we don't have it?
Right, yeah, we could.
We'd have to open it up.
To at least that person?
Well, for, we'd have to.
I've got no problem with us opening it up again.
So are we saying we're opening it up? I guess, I guess, are we saying that? I mean, I guess, I'd like to look at the information. I mean, my first instinct would be to appoint one of the alternates to the full-time position. Because that's why they were appointed, right? So it'd kind of be a little bit, I mean, that's, that's why they're there, is to step into that role. And they've been into all the meetings. So if we were going to open it up, are we just opening it up for like the alternate positions or for? Yeah, okay.
Question I've got, have the alternates been attending the meetings?
They, they have.
They have, okay.
Yes.
Well, do we want to go ahead and open it up? Because at minimum, we may want to add, we don't have to add additional alternates. That's kind of a recommendation, but we don't have to. But we could, we could open it up and see, see, see if we get some. And then this, this person could, who previously sought to apply, could apply. If anybody else applies, we could just look at all that. We don't have to, it doesn't tie our hands for what we do. So is that consensus? All right, all right, well.
So just for clarity, we're opening it up for all three positions? Or we just open it up?
I think just like we did before, for people who are interested in serving. And then, you know, it might be an alternate, it might be a full position. You know, we didn't guarantee which slot it might go into last time. Just for, for people who are interested in serving in some capacity. All righty. On December 5th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On December 5th at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold the regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye? Aye, we're adjourned.